Okay. Well, I think.
I guess it'll play that until somebody joins, so. Alright, we'll call the order. Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Megan? Not present? Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Proven agenda?
I would like to add the number six, uh, council concerns. And then Mo- Move will approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Is that include our resolution appointing mayor pro temp and we can have discussion on that? For your council concerns, can we include that in there?
Uh, that's not on the agenda already?
It did not make it on the agenda.
Okay. I'm not sure we can add an action item, can we?
Oh, just discuss and we'll make it an action item on January 2nd.
Okay. The move that we, uh, add as item six, discussion, uh, concerning appointing a council person and item seven, council concerns.
We have four A for that council.
We do have the council person on here.
Four A.
This is, I'm sorry, this is just the, uh, appointing of the mayor pro temp.
Oh, the mayor pro temp discussion of, uh, appointing the mayor pro temp? And why don't we already have one?
We do currently, but when we're going into the new year.
It's the resolution that, for the committees.
Okay, just discussing committee, uh, positions and what?
Yeah.
Okay. So, discussion appointing mayor pro temp and committees, chairs for, uh, calendar year twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that still.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ken?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Alright, on to business. First item is discussion and action on appointing replacement council member. So we have, um, Tanner Schrock. Did I say that right, Tanner?
Yep.
And then we also have Joel Westendorf, their applications or any packets. Discussion of this. When we give them an opportunity to talk first.
Tanner, what do you got to say?
You want me to read my thing I estimated, or?
No.
Nope, let me see that.
Okay, so, um, I've always kind of interest, interest in city government, um. So, I guess the last few years I've done planning zoning and board adjustment and kind of like to move on to something a little bit bigger, maybe have a little bit more impact, so. Um, so yeah, I mean, it's been fun for the last three and a half years, but just looking for something all different maybe.
Do you, uh, uh, work full-time out of town?
Uh, in Cambridge, so I'm not too far away.
And you have evenings free?
Yes.
Okay. Sure.
And I would make that a priority to disrupt every meeting or anything, so.
Yeah, there's council meetings and then there's, uh, council people are appointed to committees, to chair committees and so, uh, they have those meetings also. One of the council people attends P and Z, uh, and, uh, you know, the fire board or the fire meetings and we just have, we keep a liaison, uh, presence with, uh, those committees. And then we have external, uh, uh, things that we attend also at the county level, so. Uh, it's maybe one extra unpaid meeting a month.
Okay. But it's all weeknights?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for when we're doing budgets, uh, we meet with the fire board, uh, on a Saturday. But everything else is, uh, weeknights.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions for Tanner?
Joel?
Joel?
Joel Westmore, uh, so, I just kind of moved into town a couple of years ago, um, and I got involved with the, the city as far as working on EMS side, um. Got experience on, uh, fire, EMS and, and law enforcement. Retired from the air force, retired from the state, and now I'm working, uh, I'm a reserve police officer in the city state center where I was appointed as the school resource officer for West Marshall. Um, that's kind of just a part-time job, but it, it does take up a lot of time. Um, it's almost a full-time job, so, um, as far as the, the questions you were asking, as far as, uh, meetings at night, there are some nights where I, I just can't be available because I have to be up there for events in the school district, so.
Is, is there any pattern to those?
No. I know there's, uh, a couple of Mondays, um, there's one in January and one in February where I wouldn't be available on the, on those Mondays because we have basketball games, um, but just kind of hit and miss on, I mean, obviously during the, the fall, football games are on Friday nights, so I don't have to worry about that, uh, too much, but, um, yeah, you kind of jump around, uh, there's no, we had no school events on Wednesday nights, so that's, that's pretty much wide open for me.
Any other questions for Joel? I just want to say I thank you both for putting your names in the hat. It's important that we have new additional people that are interested in becoming part of this community. Uh, so whichever way the council decides, I do appreciate you guys both putting names in there.
And you understand it would be a two-year commitment to fill out the remaining, uh, two years of Lauren's, uh, slot.
Yes.
And this is a pleasant problem to have two qualified people interested in. I thank both of you as well.
Probably flip a coin.
Right?
Yeah, we can't go wrong.
To everyone that are individuals. Uh, and they've both been in town about the same amount of time, so. I had asked Joel to, uh, put his name in. My, my thing was for, he knows a lot about safety officer, you know, police officer, being a safety officer, um, I know there's some concerns in town about, do the cops spend enough time? I think he might have some ideas and stuff too for that kind of thing. So that's why I asked him to, to go, so I'll make an animation. Joel. Second.
Further discussion? There you go. Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Alright. Joel, you got selected. Tanner, again, I really do appreciate you putting your name in the hat, um.
Don't leave town because I might die or need a replacement.
Don't, don't want to discourage anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we appreciate that we're our conservative community as well, so. It's very important that we have those people that are really interested and vested in this, so.
What you want to put your name in?
Huh?
For the election.
Oh.
And we were looking for a lot of people during the election time, so, but. Um, okay, put your name in next time for the election too.
Alright, um, Doug, you have the...
You have a daughter?
No.
No. Is there another Schrock?
Yes, my brother and his wife from town as well.
Oh, okay. Well, she just won an award from the Legion, uh, today for an essay that she wrote.
Oh.
Oh, nice.
Lydia? Lydia?
Yes.
Alright, Joel. We will, uh, go ahead and sign you in with your office.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tanner.
Yep, see you later.
No problem, you're okay. Yep. Name there for us?
I, Joel Westendorf, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties for the office of city council in the city of Maxwell, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law.
Alright. Thank you, Joel. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I'll give him all of his paperwork now.
Hey, Joel. Next, uh, Doug, uh. Okay, is he next to Doug?
Good thing we didn't tell him, he's the next neighbor for his.
I know.
Yeah, he's just had all the paperwork too. Want to have me heard.
Except that.
Forgot to add space for where you modeled.
Two weeks, uh, senior year.
I'm older anyways.
Alright. Moving on to discussion and action on a resolution approving the grant agreement with idea for water main improvement project.
Move approval of the resolution?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, sixteen pages of, uh, uh, contract. Eleven pages of contract and then additional four pages of attachment. Uh, is this the standard IDPA, uh, contract for their grants? Was there anything in there that, uh, was unusual?
There wasn't anything stood out.
I didn't see anything that stood out, but then I couldn't get to my other, my last CDBG because it's in a box somewhere. I think it's actually in your box and you should have looked through the box, so.
Well, I read through it and it looked, uh, pretty standard, pretty official, uh. I know when we go for the SRF loans, that, uh, we have a requirement of a financial advisor and, uh, having to set up a separate sinking fund, uh, because it's a repayment, but this is great. Uh, and so as long as we, uh, meet the requirements of the grant, which our engineer will help us do, uh, I think it's pretty standard.
Any other discussion? There you go.
I make a motion then, the mayor.
You have a motion.
Oh, you got a motion.
Second.
Who approved and the mayor assigned.
Uh, Doug got second.
Third.
How about you, Doug?
Say it!
Ken?
I'll just shut up.
Ken?
Yeah!
Okay, Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Immediately move the resolution so that we would be able to discuss it after it was seconded. So, that's why that happened to us.
Alright, uh, discussion and action on a resolution approving a grant administration agreement with simmering quarry for the Maxwell Water Vane Improvement Project.
Move approval of the resolution? One second.
Yeah? Discussion.
Again, this is standard simmering quarry language, uh, for grant administration. I didn't see anything unusual with it. Uh, it is a requirement, uh, for if we get the grant funds that be administered a certain way, takes a little bit of money off the top, but.
So this is part of the grant then, that?
Is the requirements that come into the federal funding.
We'll, we'll pay for auto grant proceeds.
Okay.
So the requirements come in that we have to beat the bacon, or the Davis Bacon related act.
Understand all that.
Track six hours, couple of minutes kickback, the, uh, the girls' cost, cost evaluation, so.
So we're looking at twenty thousand dollar commitment here, but when you get on page three.
Three of fourteen?
Three of fourteen. Eight percent of twenty thousand dollars isn't two thousand dollars that they're requiring. Looks like they want eight percent upfront. Eight percent of twenty thousand would be sixteen hundred. I don't know if that makes a difference if we're just paying more in the first than, than that, but it's, it's not eight percent. If it's of the twenty thousand dollars.
I think the two thousand just makes it easier for calculating.
That's what I wondered, okay, just. So the eight percent is not actual then?
In our last CDBG, we paid in two thousand increments.
Was that, okay. That was the only math number that didn't match.
Further discussion? There you go. Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Your motion carries. On to discussion action on lift gate or yard waste. So, this will be, um, the finalized numbers came in, we were at, I don't have a packet for it. It probably is a shared work site on the interwebs that, uh, it's updating through Van Vanem, through Verkata, and I don't have access to it. I could forward you guys a link to it so you guys can review it. What it basically says is they want ten thousand dollars for a camera install at the park. It'll be another ten thousand dollars for the camera install at the waste treat, or at the waste site. And then there was another twenty thousand dollars in order to install the lift gate. So we'd be looking at, and that was the overestimated cost on the lift gate. The bonus is bringing electrical, because we're gonna have to bring the electrical from the truck pulls across the road, drop a line, and that would put the electrical there for the lift gate as well as for the camera system. So it includes two cameras at the waste site, one is a Pan tilt zoom, um, with, uh, full control and access by city hall, um, as well as council members can review it via. And then the other was a license plate reader camera that would automatically access or operate the lift gate. The install code also included two weighted, um, basically vehicle sensors on each side of the gate. So that, once you enter with the license plate, then it would sense when you leave, so it would open and allow you to leave. Yes, it's exactly what it is, so, um, that was where that was at, but, but what the costs are. Like I, like I said, this is the twenty thousand dollars, what they told me was an overestimate, but they weren't sure where they were gonna come in just yet because they were waiting for a finalized contract from, um, the lift gate manufacturer. Said soon as could be installed would be April, um, for both projects. The only additional outlay that would be required after is there is a five hundred dollar per year, um, Verkata contract to continue operating their, uh, camera remote monitoring system, as well as an additional cellphone requirement for two lines of cellphone that would provide the internet access to, um, have the cameras operational.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I know that there's one person in addition to me that takes their, uh, garden tractor down with a little trailer and there's no license plates on those. How would that affect going in and out?
So there would be a remote capability as well, which would be required for the city because we have tractors that we utilize for going down there, processing them. Um, so there would be some remote capabilities which, you know, we could get an extra remote that we can loan out during those situations. So part of this all stems from how, how would we fund it, of course? So, one of the considerations that I had was that we created permitting process where, um, if Sue wants to come down and drop her yard waste sometime between Friday and Sunday, Sue could come down, pay a small fee and have access to that, to the yard waste site during those hours. And then those hours are automatically operated through the Verkata system, then it was shut down. Um, the other side of that is we have several commercial applications that utilize our yard waste site. Um, with that, we could charge an annual fee and put their license plate in for that time period. Um, of course with commercial, I would assume with the amount that they're, they're utilizing it would be a higher cost than what a standard system would be for a weekend that they would dump their yard waste. Just some of my thoughts, but I also understand it's a lot of money too.
Uh, and the reason that we're doing this is?
So, the DNR has required that we have a controlled access to the waste site. Alright, now our controlled access to the waste site is, uh, they come up, check out the key and go back down. Um, we currently cannot burn, uh, because of, uh, the DNR closure on our burning, uh, due to impacts of air quality and surrounding homes, uh, which, have we heard back on those surveys yet? Have we sent those?
Surveys?
The air quality to the homes that were in that affected area?
No.
So we still need to get that.
Have we sent letters out even?
No, because you didn't tell me to send them out, we guess we're all still deciding.
Because we had about twenty people that are within that quarter mile radius that we have to.
I think it was.
Get their permission and affidavit, whatever that means.
And my DNR guy sent me a couple of samples of affidavit, so they'll, they'll accept.
Um, and then in addition to that was damage and, uh, um, basically nuisance at the restroom at the park for that, that camera setup there so that we could monitor and track and find that. Uh, we did have recently, um, a contractor who had broken into the yard waste, they had unbolted the lock and, uh, that information was forwarded to the sheriff's office. We got that with a trail cam.
In the process of getting a report from the officer for that.
So we did identify?
Yep.
Who did it? And it was one of the commercial users?
Yes.
Not from around here?
Not a local.
So, we were considering this, uh, because DNR told us we had to control the site.
Correct.
Uh, they also told us that we cannot burn.
Correct.
Uh, if we control the site, then we still don't necessarily, aren't necessarily able to burn.
At this moment.
Right, until we get affidavit signed by, uh, all the property owners and we, I did a map and I can't remember how many.
Twenty-seven, I think, lower twenties.
Okay. Uh, and if we don't get the twenty signed, then we can't burn.
Still can't burn.
Uh, do, does the gate with the lock on it right now meet DNR's requirement?
At the moment, yes, it's a cold site.
Uh, and we would want to go upgrade this to something better. I presume if, uh, we can get back into the, to the point where we can burn out there.
Correct, that is the deciding factor because otherwise we can't take anything out there. There is no newer dump site if we can't dispose of the dump.
Yeah, the leaves that people collect, uh, it has a limit on how many you can take.
Yep.
Uh.
Trees, brush, branches.
And so if we can't get to a point where we burn, then there's no reason to be spending money on a gate.
Right.
So, do we, uh, delay the decision on the gate until we know whether or not we're gonna be able to burn?
I agree.
The information you provided, uh, at forty thousand dollars, uh, yes, I think, uh, if we go that route, then yes, we should be, uh, charging an annual fee to, uh, anybody with a commercial license or who's dumping commercially, uh, maybe even setting a, uh, smaller fee for, you know, pickup loads, uh, for homeowners, you know, block or two or whatever. Uh, and all that would generate revenue, but it doesn't pay for the gate.
Correct.
We're gonna have to pay for, pay for it on the front end and then, uh, establish fees that will maybe allow us to, uh, do the next repair or replacement. So, uh, the forty thousand dollars if we go that way, wasn't it?
Roughly forty.
Uh, I think, uh, would be eligible for community betterment, uh, funds. Uh, and, uh, then we establish appropriate fees. But before we do anything, let's make sure that the DNR agrees with the design, with, uh, the process that we're gonna follow, uh, for, uh, having controlled access and that we have everybody's signature. Uh, because apparently if we don't get one person, then we can't do anything.
Right.
And the other option, I think I mentioned, uh, in an email, is, uh, let's see if we can negotiate the property owner, uh, to the west, uh, that moved the burn site over, uh, a couple hundred feet, uh, which then moves it out of everybody's, uh.
Range.
Range. And the property owner may not wanna sell the property, but they may be willing to do a long-term lease. And the property owner may not wanna sell the property, but they may be willing to do a long-term lease, short-term lease, which, uh, would still give us a burn location. Uh, and so that'd be something that we, uh, certainly could pursue against anyone that owned the property to the, uh, to the west.
So do we have any issues if we ask Deb to get those letters out to the surrounding?
We should have, definitely get the letters out, include a copy of the affidavit, and, uh.
Process will wait.
Yeah, may, we may need to even, uh, do a little bit of, uh, personal visiting with, uh, uh, some people if we don't get them back, but, uh, yep.
Deb, can you add that to your tiny list of things today?
So if we can burn so much. Then, do we just shut down all the other, the wood part, so I mean, the commercial part?
They have to shut down the leaves, awesome.
Yeah, that's, what I'm getting at is maybe a mulching, or a wood chipper type thing to make mulch, and then we could use it around trees, the park, or whatever, and we can mulch it somehow, and if people want some mulch, they can come get it.
We do it one time in the past, I believe we have rented that mulcher, or at least we've had a.
I think we did, because we ran into, during this, uh.
The Drescher.
During Drescher, we had a mulch.
Huge, huge one that did old trees.
Yep.
But that wouldn't be what we'd be looking at, you know, for down there.
Big enough to take, so, I mean, we're not gonna be able to take that huge trees like that anymore.
When we, when I first moved to town, uh, uh, you could put bundles of sticks out on your, uh, out your, out of curb, and there was a limit on the diameter of the branch, and I think it was like two inches, which would be, uh, about the maximum size that, uh, standard mulcher would take. And so, yeah, maybe, uh, we allow people to take branches in, uh, that are less than two inches, and the city buy a mulcher that they can pull behind the tractor, and we go down once a week and chop things up. I think those are all possibilities that, uh, we can look at.
So I did wanna add that we can look at this as two separate projects as well, if we wanna consider the protection from the vandalism at the restroom, 'cause that was a ten thousand dollar project on its own. Or if we wanna try and source grant funds for that before we make or take any action on that.
Um, are we, the restroom's all locked now?
Yes.
Uh.
That's the other thing, so six months out of the year, we have a camera looking at a door that doesn't open.
That doesn't mean they're not gonna.
Doesn't mean that they won't.
Spray paint it or kick it or.
Yeah. And we can also turn it towards the city shed at that time, too.
Have you ever had any vandalism of the city shed?
Nothing, I haven't.
Um, and the ten thousand dollars for the restroom would not be a camera that reads license plates, it would just be.
It's just a pan tilt zoom, vertically mounted on a pole, uh, electrical coming out of the, uh, out of the shower or the bathroom. Uh, and then there's a, some, more technical than I, electronic connectors that they would put inside that room, so it would all be secured in the, basically the pipe chase of that restroom. And the wires would run up to the pole from that restroom to power the, power the camera.
And that's ten thousand dollars installed?
Yes. But still, annual costs of the barricada system operating that camera, as well as the, uh, cellphone requirements.
So with something like that camera, is there any other security type company that could put a camera up?
I checked with three different companies, um, two of which never responded. One came down, looked at it, basically said it's, without internet connection, basically dropping a, a line from city hall to the park and to the, and to the dump site there, and I mean, I consider it.
Did you talk to the company that Collins used?
This is.
That is that company?
Yeah, which company is that?
Barricada, it's Barricada and Badman Electric.
Okay.
And that was exactly.
Well, I know they're very happy with what they have, they've used it positive ways a couple of different occasions already.
I know, we use Astra, so I don't know if they were contacted at all, or.
They were, uh, their issue again was without internet connectivity, they didn't have any options. Where Barricada at least has the cellphone capabilities built into their cameras. Of course, an initial cost of that, the initial cost was running a T one cable from here down.
So at one time I mentioned internet wifi at the park promoted by the city, for the town. Is that something that I can still look at, and then, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, that's potential, um, and again.
I know some towns, I, I mean, we got a lot going on down there now at our park in summer times, not as much in the winter time. But, um, I think the wifi connection down there at the park for anybody to use, Romeo Market at the park, anybody having a birthday party, whatever, softball games, I mean, it'd be a nice thing for anybody, I don't know if we'd get some money for the betterment, you know, gown for that or something.
'Cause then we wouldn't have the five hundred dollars a year, we wouldn't need two new cell lines, 'cause that's not gonna be a cheap outlay for those alone.
Right.
And getting wifi in the park, uh, would involve a monthly fee, uh, to have the internet line.
Right.
From the phone company, uh.
Potentially data as well, based on the fact that there could be a multitude of people utilizing it.
Right. And then you have, uh, the various, uh, wifi hotspots that certainly could mesh together so you could cover the whole park, uh. And perhaps, and perhaps that would be cheaper.
Worth contacting, um, Windstream about, or, or the cold down?
You can reach out to, we gotta contact the city of Ames, 'cause I know, like, downtown district of Ames has it. Uh, we can reach out to the mayor there.
I know, uh, Pope City has it in there, I don't know what they use, but Pope City has it in their park.
You know, might be, yes, we should look into it, because there's also the option of, uh, uh, getting, you know, having a hotspot that's, uh, just, uh, cellphone enabled, and so it's a cellphone hotspot. And we have some of those, uh, at the, uh, garage right now. But the nice thing about that is, it has nothing to do with our network. It's on the, uh, phone network, and it's, so it would be access to the internet, and we wouldn't have to worry about, uh, anybody breaking into, uh, the city hall network. So, and it doesn't require anything other than having power. Doesn't require, uh, data communication lines being run or anything. It'd just be a mesh, uh, network that, that goes to a cellphone. And that five, five G, that's plenty of speed, probably more speed than is available through, uh, Windstream. So yes, that should, I think that should be looked into also.
We'll reach out.
I wonder, I wonder, I wonder if this should be part of, uh, thrown out for the visioning people. Well, the visioning people are doing transportation, like, the park is an attraction, transportation attraction, so it may fit in.
Possibly, I'll bring it up.
Take a note, Stephen?
So it sounds like no action at the time.
Take a note, Stephen?
Stephen, I have a question for ya, this, um, have you signed up to be one of the students to be on this visionary deal? I don't know if you heard about it from school, but I know they were looking for so many high schoolers and so many, um, elementary kids.
So we actually did get the numbers required, and that took place on the fourth.
Okay.
So last Thursday, Iowa State was at the school and spoke with, uh, enough kids to be able to move on to the next step.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
I just wonder if you heard about it or.
Alright, um, oh, more to.
So the resolution on this is that I believe the council is, uh, in favor of pursuing, uh, further, uh, the, uh, a method for, uh, securing the, uh, park and, uh, pursue, and separately pursuing, uh, the lift gate. Uh, if DNR agrees that what we're doing meets all their, uh, requirements and, uh, for control, uh, and if we get everybody signed off, then we could open it back up for burning. So a few things to check on, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for bringing in.
Yep, have a lot of time now already, so thank you.
Alright, um, before, let's see, we had a, you wanted, uh, the council concern to be number six, correct?
Yeah, so we're at the public hearing.
Right, public hearing. So we have a third reading of the ordinance, pending the code of ordinance, so this is the city of MacTober, crazy parking in specific areas.
Move the open, uh, public hearing?
Sure.
Early discussion? Go ahead, man.
Wouldn't you know, it would be me. I still think Rock Creek Drive has no shoulder, it has the ditches on either side. I do think that you should have no parking on one side or the other because of that. I, I was going down one way, car was coming the other way, and we both had to creep over to the side in a narrow area. It's, it needs to be no pa, no parking on one side, whichever side. It's just too narrow and too windy, and it's, it's dangerous as is right now.
Doug, I have a question, are the mailboxes on one side?
No.
No.
They're not.
Could that be changed?
Well, that'd have to be something to be changed with the postal, 'cause they had mailbox on one side of the road until my neighbor came over and backed out and hit it, and I just put it, so I asked him if I could put it on my, on my side of the road, but I think you have to ask the mail people for that.
That's postal, postal concern or postal restrictions, write about that, posted.
I was just saying, if that was the case, then if we, if you, if anybody was gonna allow parking, or no parking, it would be the side where all the mailboxes are, so that nobody would.
They're with the houses.
Right.
There's a twenty foot restriction of parking near mailbox, anyway.
Either twenty or thirty, I can't, it was fine.
They're ready this week.
If there were a shoulder where a car could park, but the ditch is too close. There, there isn't enough of a shoulder there to park on, so you end up parking, anybody would end up parking in the street, taking up one side.
Have we voted to open the hearing? I know we had emotions, like we did.
Oh, no, we didn't.
We didn't vote in.
Joel.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Haven't counted you.
Alright.
Okay, now I can vote.
Well, ignore what you said before.
Yeah.
Did you, did you identify yourself with the. I'm just saying.
I'm Sue Philpott, six fourteen, six, yeah. Yeah, I was at six fifteen Rock Creek, now I'm at six fourteen six, I get it, yeah. Okay, what I said before.
Yeah, well, I, I understand the discussion that we had on this item, uh, and the, uh, people who live there, their concerns, and by striking, uh, the parking restriction on, uh, Rock Creek Drive so that they can park on either side, I think it's not doing anything that is not currently being done today. I think that the signs are so confusing that people park wherever, uh, and that I would, uh, I'm personally in favor of going ahead and amending the ordinance like this, and seeing, seeing if it is, becomes a problem, and if it is, then we can always amend the ordinance to put restrictions on it.
Initially, those signs were put up because emergency vehicles were having a problem navigating through there. That was the rea, I was there before any signs were up.
Yep, we, and we.
And that was the reason.
We had testimony at the last meeting from the fire chief and EMS chief that said that they didn't think it'd be a problem.
Now, after the city had already put up signs and.
I don't think anything is gonna change, Sue, from where we currently are. You slow down, you get over, you meet the car, you get back in the middle of the road, just like a gravel road or anything else. Um, we may need to have the police sit out there and make sure twenty-five is the maximum speed, but that's an issue every place in town as well.
Oh, yeah, but, Doug, you know, well, you don't go as far up to the end, but.
Well, I drive the whole thing every day with the bus.
Oh, well, yeah, with the bus.
And if there's a problem with the bus.
But you see what I'm saying.
So with the bus, you're now getting maybe between a car here and there.
No, there's one or two here and there, and people don't park as a general rule on it. But when you have Christmas or.
Right, right.
Graduation, yes, they're gonna park there regardless of the signs.
But you see what I'm saying about it being narrow and windy and no shoulders and.
That's why it's twenty-five instead of tire speed.
Yeah. Maybe they should put twenty-five on the front of every house so they get.
Maybe we should have a few more, some medium-sized signs out there. Move the close of public hearing?
One second.
Any discussion on that? Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes, kid?
Yes, yes. I handed out, uh, another copy of the ordinance that, uh, because I see that there's a couple of Scrivener area errors on the one that's in the packet. Uh, there's two section sevens on the one that's in the packet, and we are deleting, uh, paragraph thirteen twice, once in section five and again in section seven. So the one I handed out solves that by not having two, uh, section seven. And, uh, I eliminated what was section five, which deleted paragraph. which deleted paragraph thirteen because it's down in section six.
Okay.
So I, I think those are just what they refer to as script errors. Uh, and, uh, so approving this as a third reading, uh, would not be a problem, uh, in my opinion. And then I also included, uh, uh, what the code looks like with strikeout and underline, uh, in following, uh, what we had heard in the free, uh, readings. You can see the red numbers, the red is, of course, is strikeout. And so when you strike out two, uh, the next one becomes two.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, it ends up with twelve things because we're deleting three. So it seemed to all work out.
I'll make a motion, go ahead. I'll make this motion that we go ahead and accept the third reading as...
Corrected.
Corrected by Steve on this.
I will second.
Further discussion? There you go. Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Kid?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
What's your concerns?
So have Tony go and remove?
All signs.
All signs.
Or replace them with twenty-five mile an hour.
Once, once the ordinance is popped out, once it's published, yeah.
Alright, one, two, number six, um, council concern?
Uh, no, I thought discussion appointing...
We can do that first, everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that we have that as number six.
Alright. So currently, um, Doug is listed as the mayor pro temp, and I would like to continue that. Does anybody have any concerns?
No, I think he's done an excellent job.
Perfect.
And if I do an objection, somebody may want me to be at night. I love, I love Doug, Doug doing it.
As Sue's not going to do.
Do you have any concerns?
No, none at all on that.
Because this is going to be on, on the agenda in January when you'll have an official vote.
Yeah.
Alright.
Also, uh, based upon, uh, what Joel said, uh, do we wanna move the regular meeting from Monday night to Wednesday night? Do you have any problems with Wednesday night?
No, Wednesday would be very...
I don't have any problems with Wednesday night?
It's the way it used to be.
It works.
Works for me.
It's gonna increase the probability that there will not be a conflict. Of course, that doesn't guarantee for anybody that there won't be a conflict.
Absolutely.
But, uh...
We're troubleshooting as well as we can.
Now, do we want the first Wednesday? Second Wednesday, third Wednesday?
If it's the first Wednesday, give you time for things.
To do things?
I'll deal. I deal with everything.
The biggest problem is going to be on any publication, uh, because you have to have it in by Friday. And if, if, if something is approved on Wednesday, uh, for public, and that needs to be published, you only have two days to get it done rather than, uh,
Four days.
Four days.
Mm-hmm.
Can you think of any other concerns?
That would be the only one.
Is the publication every week or is it just...
No, it's whenever, whenever we have an ordinance, sorry. There are certain things that have to be published.
It's an option every week.
And...
Oh, to be published, okay.
Anytime, the paper comes out once a week.
Okay.
We have to have it to the paper by Friday, and it will then show up in the next Thursday's paper.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I was wondering, I don't know, I don't get papers, so if that was a, a weekly or...
It's a weekly issue.
Okay, if it's a weekly, then it wouldn't make any difference.
The only other thing would be is if, yeah, if I have to publish something, if I have to let the budget and whatever, if I have to make changes from that time to that time in order to get it in time, it won't be enough time.
What do you say?
Like the budget, if you guys make changes or if I've gotta double check things, you guys approve it on Wednesday, that gives me Thursday and maybe partial Friday to try and get...
Is there a deadline Friday time?
No.
No, sometimes they will take it on Monday.
Sometimes they'll say two o'clock or whatever.
You're saying that sometimes you need that whole week in order to get things to balance or whatever.
And they've changed the way that they take things, so like the budget is now becomes a different kind of ad, so they have to go in and create something different, and it takes them longer to do it. So sometimes it takes them a week, a week to do it, to get it back to me and say, is this right?
Really?
Um. Sometimes it just takes a day, but...
But we also had...
The minutes and stuff like that I can put, I've learned to put in by myself, so... There's a new method to do that, too.
But...
The budget and things like that is gonna be...
Just to ensure that we have as many council people here as possible, I think we should try Wednesdays. We'll have to change our, uh, schedule because we moved everything to a Monday.
Right.
And so I'll have to take a look at our budget schedule. Uh, the state sent it to us as Tuesdays. Uh, we've moved it to Mondays now, moving it to Wednesdays. I'll just have to see if there's any conflicts. And if there is, we have to move everything forward. So, because we can't move anything back.
I would not only like to add that my first, my three Wednesdays following, the last three, the second, third, the fourth Wednesdays in the month are usually busy with emergency management or, um, different conferences and things that are going on, so...
So the first one?
First one for the last five months have been clean, so...
Okay.
What about time? And that's the other thing that needs to be in that, uh, resolution, the time of the meeting.
Doug, you run the bus route early on Wednesdays?
No, because there's still an athletic run at five o'clock.
And that's gonna change next year anyway, right?
Possibly.
Possibly with the Mondays, yeah.
But there'd still be a five o'clock run on Wed- yes, I...
Right.
Wednesday will be a five o'clock run.
Stay with six?
Six currently.
Do we wanna stay with six or move it back to, uh, six thirty?
I can make six.
Six works for me.
Okay, I'll work for that.
I know earlier...
I like six thirty, but...
Oh, you like six, so you better?
I do, but I would work with whatever. I'm just wondering if six...
Others?
There's no, I've seen the past where there's been some long meetings that I think if the earlier we start, the earlier we can get out sometimes.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
And the other thing that's, uh, on that, uh, resolution is, uh, chairs and co-chairs. Uh, I think that, uh, Joel's strong point is going to be in the, um, fire, EMS, and sheriff, there's a public safety chair. Uh, and second, uh, co-chair?
Yeah.
Public safety.
So facilities committee is one that is completely vacant. And we have, um, enterprise committee. Steve, were you interested in staying on this chair?
And you had, read to me what the enterprise committee does?
Responsible for the operations of the sewer utility, water utility, garbage collection issues.
Sure.
And Doug had also agreed that he would stay on there. Um, the facilities committee is responsible for the operations of streets, parks, and trails. We had Megan and Moore on that committee, so both of those seats are vacant.
Well, do, uh, Ken and Joel just wanna switch those around, Ken being the chair and Joel being...
Chair. And whoever. Joel, you wanna be it?
Well, yeah, we still got...
Oh, we got Sue.
So you wanna be on that one as the vice chair?
As you chair one and you're vice chair on the different one.
So what are we missing? We're missing two yet.
So we got a government committee, um, that one is, the chair is vacant, Ken is currently the vice. Ken is listed as the vice and the chair of two committees already, so we should leave that one vacant as well.
Sue, you wanna be the government committee, that's planning, zoning, uh...
Yes. I miss being part of planning and zoning, so yes, I would like to.
And what's the last committee?
So we've, we need a vice chair, there's, Ken's gonna stay on that one.
Oh, what's the last?
Or Joel.
Where's Steve at? Steve's got one.
Steve's on, or she's up in scratch there.
Yeah.
You wanna be on the government committee?
I don't know, what's the last committee?
Uh, the last committee is Betterment Committee, which, uh, Doug is currently the chair, um, and Megan was the vice. So we need to fill the vice.
Well, Betterment is all the...
Sue's the vice for that.
Uh...
Economic development.
Development. I've been attending a lot of those with you.
I wouldn't mind staying on that one.
You are. You're the top guy, not top dog.
Well, I can be, if I was co-chair on that one, then who does that mean?
Well, we can't do that because Sue is the government committee and...
Nope.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
I can go on vice here.
Her on government.
Okay, and then Joel here. I think that works.
That works.
Yep.
Doug, Sue, Ken, Joel, Steve.
Five minutes, ten days.
They're painless, too.
That works.
And?
The back page looks, uh, had Deb review that. She said there's no changes other than the Kerry, uh, moving to the deputy clerk and zoning administrator, and Scott Johnson, we added as the assistant fellow board director.
Did you catch all the chairs, Deb?
I think so. I've got public, safety is Joel and Ken, enterprise is Steve and Doug, or is it?
Yep.
Okay. Facility is Ken and Sue. Government is Sue and Joel, and Betterment is Doug and Steve.
Yeah.
Meeting on the first Wednesday of the month at six o'clock. Uh, mayor pro temp is Doug. Is there anything else on that resolution that, uh, needs to be done?
I don't see anything else other than they're adding it to next month's council agenda for just January second, so we can make that approval.
Is our meeting gonna be January second?
Yes.
We, we already scheduled that.
We, we discussed that, uh, last month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a...
Thought that was just gonna be a budget. Is that gonna be our full one now?
Well, if... Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and hold it January third, which is what this thing would be, say it would be anyway.
Alright. So we'll move that meeting to January third at six P.M. and then we'll start, we'll make this that amendment then. That will be our full meeting.
Are we gonna meet, uh, on the second, uh, to do, uh, initial budget stuff?
Works for me.
It could, it could be a short meeting.
So that was...
But one of the things that we have to do on the budget initially is make decisions on, uh, salaries, uh, whether we're going to be, uh, doing a merit increase, or we might be doing, uh, uh, cost of living increase, whether we're gonna be doing any flat rate increases such as, uh, the guys getting additional licenses. Uh, so, and, uh, the amount of time they spend in various areas. Do they, uh, spend fifty percent in, uh, sewer, uh, and water and fifty percent on roads? Or is it closer to forty, sixty? And so we should have their input, uh, on what they feel their percentage worth while it is. Uh, and we get that general, uh, look at salaries, then we, at the end of the budget process, when we're trying to make things balance, we may have to adjust it, but at least that's usually the starting point, that and insurance. Uh, and so Deb, if you would talk to our agent and see what she thinks there's gonna be, if, what she thinks the percentage increase is gonna be. I think we've already done the, uh, all, all the new stuff and, uh, how much of the bill goes to sewer and how much goes to water and all that. I don't think that's changing this year, does it?
Mm-hmm.
So it'd just be, her guess is it's gonna be a five percent increase, ten percent increase, three percent? You know, I hope. But if she can give us...
Zero percent?
Yeah. If she can give us, uh, some broad guesses, then we should also maybe take a look at, uh, our, uh, debt service. Uh, we know that, uh, we may be incurring more debt for the, uh, water treatment plant, uh, and, uh, I don't know if there, maybe we should have, uh, our, uh, Wes come in and talk about Baldwin because, uh, we should have, we should have all the pieces together now, and we should be able to come up with some estimate of where the funds are coming from, even though we don't have final bids yet. Uh, we should be able to work a little bit on that.
Do we need to, I guess primarily Tony, but look at the time spent on fire and non-city direct costs?
And possibly have a... All part of the discussion, yeah.
Okay, I possibly have it, but we'll need some input from Tony down there on, maybe even a little data that, here's what I did. Because I know they spend a lot of time, it's needed, but they spend quite a bit of time, both Ian and Scott, dealing with the building itself.
And maybe for our, uh, initial meeting, uh, setting a, uh, uh, general rule of thumb, do we expect prices for things to go up? And if we do, are we going to hold the line and, uh, just do it less? Or are we gonna say, well, yeah, there's, we're gonna have a, a three percent increase across the board? And then see where that takes us and then start cutting back from there. I think there's different... You could get bogged down to the detail, or you can make some high-level, uh, goal setting so that when you get into the detail, you can make, uh, adjustments. We can all do that on the second.
So two meetings on the second, six P.M. for budgetary. Standard new meeting on the third, for the regular. Six P.M.
You're looking at a not very happy clerk. You realize we've got two holidays in there, I've got a payroll and a billing and a some other stuff in there, end of year.
Suggestions?
Can we incorporate the budget into council meeting?
I, I'm just saying, it's going to be tight for me.
Just...
Plus getting all these letters out to the twenty people is...
And that may have to be held to the next week or so.
Is Kerry able to help with any of that?
Kerry is learning a lot, she's doing well. She might be able to help out on the letters.
On the letters, yeah, that'd be good, letters and.
The letters and the affidavit, uh.
I could help with that, too.
Any other suggestions? I mean. We we have budgets that we have to do and we have regular council meetings that we have to do, so.
But it's following a week that, two weeks where we we have two holidays within there. I've got payroll and that and accounts payable, we also have utility billing in there, which I'm still helping Kerry with because she's still learning. Um, I have end of year stuff that week, um.
Well, we move our uh, well, we can't move the Wednesday meeting to the second Wednesday because that would conflict with what you have.
Uh, I actually don't have anything that week, so that week I have to be available, so.
So I mean, it's gonna be tight, I could probably get it done, it's just not gonna make me happy, cause that's usually the week I take off.
The first, first week?
Yeah.
Well, do we wanna move everything into the second week uh for January and?
No, I'd rather get the budget going.
Okay.
Cause we're we're, we've usually already got past this point.
Yeah, so we could give with the January second meeting and then having the other one on the chat?
Will work, either way.
If it's easier, we can move it to the tenth.
It would be easier.
Then we'll move it to the tenth, okay?
Do we uh swear in Sue at the second meeting?
Put that on the agenda, yes.
That's appropriate.
Occasional.
So make sure that it's a budget meeting, but then also have that as an action item. Uh, so that she could be seated appropriately. And then our, uh, maybe we have uh the one resolution establishing uh the chairs, the co-chairs and the meeting and have it, have it stated that uh they meet on the first Wednesday of the month. Except for the January meeting, which will be the second Wednesday. And if you look at the calendar and see if there's any, uh, and we should get away from a lot of holiday conflicts.
Yeah.
Except maybe the Fourth of July.
July third runs right on Wednesday.
Which is no problem. Uh, when, how, uh, Thanksgiving is Thursday, but that's at the end of the month, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll clean up a lot of holidays.
Okay.
A lot of change, a lot less changing.
Okay.
All right.
So we can act on that resolution on the second and.
See, on the second.
That's where I showed down.
Yeah.
Any questions, Steve?
No.
Are you taking good notes, right?
Huh?
I'm asking if he's taking good notes, cause he's writing up the minutes.
I I hope I take good notes.
I don't have any other council concerns.
Oh, the little map. Uh, months ago, the suggestion was made that we uh put a little storage shed down by uh the uh garage. And I raised the issue, the question or the concern, but yeah, that's still the flood plain, so uh it might get flooded. Well, we have land uh right by the fire station. Uh, if you look at the map, there's uh an area that is about forty feet by thirty feet on the uh north side of the uh.
Addition.
Addition. Uh, the only thing that's back there, I think, is the generator and the propane tank, and is that propane tank active?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a, that's a part of departments, propane tank.
Uh, why aren't they on nat- natural gas?
Is it running the generator?
So they can grill their hamburgers, I don't know.
I don't know, you can.
Oh, it could be the generator, no.
It could be the generator.
Well, that could be LP two, I mean, natural gas, too. Unless it was already set, but I think that propane tank's been back there for years.
Well. There is.
There's still room.
Yeah, thirty, thirty by forty feet. And if we, and if we have to.
Be wide.
And if we have to leave uh an access back to the uh generator, uh then we could certainly leave it on the north side. Uh, I think ten foot wide uh script, that still gives twenty foot by forty foot. Uh. We wanna, I could see putting two twenty footers side by side, right there at the corner, at the east, southeast corner. Just put two twenty footers.
We'll get one forty eight, what are they, forty eight?
Whether forty eight, forty foot, you can get a forty eight or a fifty three, but I was just thinking then that would just kinda, and then it'd still leave a lot of room over here. When I, when I measured the forty foot, I just measured it to the concrete pad. So there's probably another a little bit more, and it could also extend further out toward the uh alley, so if I come in a standard forty eight foot, probably put one there, they're ten foot wide, two of them next to each other. Uh, the issue, why we couldn't put them in the parking lot here, uh was our uh building inspector said something about a firewall. Been, am I remembering incorrectly?
Yeah.
What?
There was a firewall that he said that we need.
Is it cause it was gonna be up against the museum or?
So what we should do is get the building inspectors in and say, okay. We'd like to put it here now, maybe there would be a firewall or firewall issue with those, but then the question would be if we were just to build an addition, uh, butler building type addition onto uh the existing building. Uh, and have storage inside there, then could we do that?
Yeah, definitely could do that, it's a good idea, I like that idea.
Could almost be a lead to. Could almost be a lead to.
Uh, yeah, the walls might not be tall enough, but it might be. Put, put a concrete slab there and uh uh leave a ten foot access uh so that uh they can drive back in. I'm looking at getting rid of the propane tank, so then you just have the generator back there and could, could be maintenance, uh, could be access to maintain it.
Those are good options, I think we should add that to the budget considerations for priority.
I think with the idea of uh.
And it's not so far away.
Yes.
Right there.
Yep.
With the idea of adding on to the building, I think you can regulate your temperatures better than using a container.
Yep, will supplement it, too.
It's good stuff.
I like that idea a lot.
Cause that saves us some uh fee of paying the.
And it gives storage spaces needed. And if we build a lead to type building, you know, we can have uh nicer shelves.
I'd look at.
Lighting and everything else.
Thirty nine point eight five by sixteen. Cause that's what you've got a number there for, but instead of building, but.
By sixteen.
Sixteen now.
Sixteen foot wide, basically with a garage.
Sixteen to the north. And then get and then just.
Uh, leave, what, fourteen fourteen feet to decide it for access? Cause it's thirty, it's almost thirty feet and you're only using sixteen of it.
Right.
So.
It gives you plenty of access.
Additional fourteen.
And all you have to do is maybe take one of those two offices and or places over here in the fire station and just knock a door through that.
And a door or two even.
Open up a bigger door, a double door.
That's why you wouldn't even have to uh walk around to the alley to get into it.
You just go right through the fire station.
All right, behind the old truck, they've got storage right there already, just put another door there.
Put a door right there, exactly, right where all the chairs are and tables. And then you can move the tables and chairs into that other place, you'd have plenty of room there.
And less issues if somebody decided to get in the outside door that nobody can see.
Yeah.
Right.
More secure.
Dang.
Oh, I got ideas. Good job, Steve.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Over your turn.
Second. Oh, wait a minute, we're only on six. We're on seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, we went through it too.
All right, second.
All right, go.
Yes, go.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we didn't have Lauren here, we didn't have Megan here.
Yeah.
We'd never be able to leave.
The only reason why I had to hang up, guys, is because my, I either had to listen to the music on my phone.
Twice.
Or it was going through my ear and I could hear everybody talk just a second after they already did.
There's a light, yeah.
Yeah.
How are we doing with getting the ability to go from uh a laptop to the TV? We're gonna need that to budget.
So my.
We got the remote.
I got, I found the remote.
So we have the remote here right now.
It works.
Do we have extra peers around that that can just sit right here and he can put up all that right there? I mean, if we don't have.
My computer, I think, is sitting in the box in the post office, so I should be a little more technically savvy here shortly.
Okay. Cause I wouldn't mind seeing everybody at home or something, so if they wanted to put something up there, they could.
Yeah, to.
Cause I think we have plenty. Doesn't have to be.
The way, the way Google works, you connect your device to the.
You can just do a mirror image.
So if somebody else wanted to show their tablet, then the person who's currently showing it would disconnect and the other person would connect. Yeah, you can't.
It's kinda like a mirror image.
You can't just switch the gear, but.
Right.
Yeah, when we get into the budget, that's gonna be.
But it would be nice to have that up there. All this big work and just scan through that.
Yeah.